First up, so.
Oh, yes, sir.
And that's gonna be last. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the Wilmer City Council Work Session to order. First item on the agenda is CenterPoint Energy Grant Presentation. Chief felt.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here tonight. I'll turn the mic over to Leslie from CenterPoint Energy and she has some information about a, some money that is gonna be given for his program here in Wilmer.
Thank you. Leslie, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. I'm the supervisor at the Wilmer facility with CenterPoint Energy and I'm here to present a community partnership grant check. And CenterPoint has been serving the cities, many of the cities in the state for over 145 years. We've partnered with communities, supporting our shared commitment to safety while delivering safe, reliable, natural gas. And since 2003, this program has awarded more than 1.5 million in donations and provided funding to support 848 projects and communities throughout CenterPoint Energy Service Center, service area. Through the grant program, we are able to help cities leverage local funds to purchase needed safety equipment or support safety projects that are important to your community. We are pleased to present the city of Wilmer with a community partnership grant for $2,000 that will be used to purchase first aid supplies, safety vests, and other safety personal protection equipment. So, thank you for your efforts to make our community safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. You wanna look over here?
And I have a favor. Would you?
Oh.
For me as well? You can get us both in there since I'm so much shorter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, are there any questions you have of CenterPoint or any comments from the council?
Thank you.
I just want to, I'm sorry. I just wanna thank you for this program. I'm very familiar with it. You know, as the fire chief previously, you know, we used to, Chief Colsette and I used to switch off every other year. And so, we dealt with Jim Zilk a lot.
Yes.
Of course, we had those conversations before the meeting started. Guy that I worked with up in Burnsville, was a firefighter in Burnsville, so.
And I worked with him for 15 years.
Right, out here, right. So, yeah. So, I remember when you came two years ago and presented a check and thank you for your continued investment in Wilmer. So, these are things that make our community very strong. So, thank you very much.
That's part of my job.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Labor Relations Committee and I'll go straight to Sam with that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, first off, we have, we need to approve, excuse me, propose ordinance forming a recreation department. As pointed out, that in our city charter, it requires an ordinance to be adopted in order to establish, alter, or abolish any city, department, office, or agency. So, this will need to be passed prior to the dissolution of the W C E R, which is tentatively set for September 1st. If we can approve it tonight at the council meeting, it could then be introduced August 6th for public hearing and then adopted on August 20th. Any questions?
Counselor, any questions or do you have anything to add? Sean?
No, it, there's multiple steps in the charter. We really focused on the charter our last meeting when we were looking at these things and there are some things that we need to make sure we do them in a timely fashion and this is the first step to establish that department, so.
Okay. Am I hearing a request to move that forward to tonight's agenda?
Yes.
I know the, the next one you wanna move forward, but I wasn't sure if you wanted to do this one as well.
Yeah, that would be great.
In the is, in the ish, in the interest of time, is the council okay with that? Just hearing and hearing, none, no opposition. We would entertain that to move forward. Ms. Thompson, can you make note of that? Okay, next item on the agenda, Formation of the Park and Leisure Services Board.
Okay. Recreation Committee met again on July 10th to also discuss that there's a requirement the city needs to establish a new Park and Leisure Services Board, also is required by charter. So, the city needs to form an advisory board known as the Park and Leisure Services Board. The charter says it should have six members. Obviously, with the dissolution of the W C E R, we need to form a new board. Oh, and I reached out to Robert for some clarification, but as it is a charter established board, it'll follow the same appointment procedure as any other charter established board. And we would recommend, the committee would recommend updating the name of it, however, to be Park and Recreation instead of Park and Leisure Services. Otherwise, we just need to begin the process of establishing that new park board. And then, this wasn't something we discussed at our meeting, but it came up in discussions with Ike and Janelle, that we could dissolve the W C E R Advisory Board at the same time, allowing those members to reapply if they wanted to serve on the Park and Recreation Board. So, that's something to keep in mind as well. I don't know if it needs to be done at the same time or the timeline of that.
We dissolve one before we have the other in place.
Why do we need to dissolve that if it's ending?
Well, that, that's why we didn't discuss it, I believe, is because there is a sunset of that defined by the removal of the agreement. But before that happens, we'd like to have this established and in place. So, we did not talk about them happening at the same time. We figured there was a sunset date for the Joint Powers Board.
And then, go ahead.
I just had one question. Does the charter refer to the park board right now as advisory?
Yes. There shall be an advisory board known as the Park and Leisure Services Board of six members.
Okay.
Otherwise, we had, we had a lengthy conversation about semantics of what a recreation versus leisure services and because we had a recreation director and we have been putting in everything with that terminology, but we did not wanna lose sight that the parks are a part of that, even though in our structure, we have parks under Public Works and we have the other programming under this new recreation area. We thought that this board should bring both of those entities together and so, we thought it should adopt a similar language that shows that there is a board that's dealing with both recreation as well as parks.
The only thing that I would add is that I was asked to send a letter to the Chair of the Charter. I don't think that was shared with you guys. And I wish it had been. But what I would like to see is, I would like to see this to be seven members instead of six, or to say at least seven members. And that way, giving the council the ability to expand or contract that as they felt and then maybe have a maximum number on it. But I did talk with Mr. Halliday and he was amicable to that. He understood the rationale that I had explained to him and our administrative assistant to the administrator did draft that letter for me and send that on my behalf. So, I would just like, if it's okay with your committee, to change that from six to seven.
Well, we'd have, we're gonna put that on our next agenda. We should probably talk about it, but I don't think that changes the current situation, what we're asking for here, which is to basically move forward with the reestablishment of that committee and having the appointment process go. Because we'd have to do a charter change for the committee's name anyway. And so, that request that with the Charter Commission meets, they could discuss both a name change as well as a number, membership change as well, and then we can talk about it as well. Because my understanding is either the Charter Commission can bring that forward. So, or the council. So, we can, either way, I think we should probably deliberate on it, maybe see a copy of the letter that you sent as well. But I don't know if it changes necessarily what we're doing here, which is the establishment of it. I mean, we can, because this, we're not changing the name of it yet either, but it is basically serving worrying that we are looking forward to making this new board get established. Well, really, the board we were supposed to have on my charter, it's just following the charter. And then addressing the Park and Leisure Services at the sunset, that that thing would disappear at that point.
I guess the only other thing is, Mr. Scott, so the other option is that the mayor can officially request? Is that correct or not? Or does it take makeup of the council to make that request?
I'm sorry, to, what kind of request?
A request to change that number. I mean, I don't wanna go in contrary to what this committee's doing. That's, that's my concern is that, I wish that that letter had been relayed to the committee that was meeting. It didn't happen. There were two ships crossing in the night. I was drafting a document as they were preparing an agenda. That didn't happen, but.
Well.
I just don't wanna be in conflict with what the committee work is doing.
No, I understand. The only way for the charter to actually be changed is for the Charter Commission to vote to approve the proposed amendment and then for it to come to the council and for it to be unanimously passed. And if it's not unanimously passed, the only way for it to take effect would be through an election. So, whatever that amendment looks like coming from the Charter Commission is what we'll control. There's really no formal role for the city to shape it at this point. You can certainly communicate your recommendation once you've developed it.
So, what would be your recommendation for our next step then? What I'm saying, and I'm not sure if I'm making myself clear, so let me say it one more time. I don't wanna get in the way of what the committee is doing, but yet, my recommendation to the Chair, Mr. Halliday, was to increase that number to seven, which he was gonna carry forward. I don't want to be in conflict with what their, what their, what their committee's doing.
In that case, if you're concerned that you sort of got out in front of the committee and you wanna hold back, you could certainly follow up with a letter to the commission and inform them that the, your final recommendation, as informed by the committee's deliberation, is gonna come in the future. In the meantime, you and the council absolutely can begin the process of populating this board again. It's already established in charter. So, for now, you've got a Park and Leisure Services Board and you've got six slots on it, so you can certainly begin filling those positions. As far as the charter amendment, you could certainly get back with the Charter Commission Chair with your final recommendation once the committee process has taken place.
Okay. In my understanding, and those of you that have worked on the charter will know this better than me, but my understanding is that when the Community and Rec was established, we dropped ours to six and the school had six, which then made up 12. Is that correct?
Yes, but the people who are appointed to the Community and Rec Advisory Board are, were also to serve as the park board, but that, those meetings were never held.
Right, right.
So, the six that are on the Community and Rec from the city are technically the park board right now.
Okay.
And I would say all of the charters that have ever been approved are all on the website and one could go back and see. I don't know the history of the number of people on the committee there, but that would have been documented if that has changed. I am not aware of that. But, you know, we, as our committee are forwarding this, our request that they change the name of it, and if you've referred, you know, forwarded the request to change the number, they're gonna address both of those concerns and then we'll see where it goes. I don't think you're out, I don't think it's an affront of the work of the committee. I think you're following the different avenues and the committee can respond and that's what we'll wait for, is what the Charter Commission is gonna recommend.
And just so that the council understands, I mean, I didn't do that on my own. The Charter Commission had drafted a letter for me asking my opinion and so then I responded back as my opinion as the mayor. And so, so they had specifically requested for the mayor's opinion, so that's why I did it. So, it wasn't like I was out there, so. Just something that probably would've been nice if it got caught, but it wasn't, so we just have to move forward. So, thank you very much. Counselor, what do you wish to do? Move this forward? Let's see. Yeah. Okay. So then, Ms. Thompson, move that one forward as well. Next is Public Works Committee. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean and I talked by phone this week and I told them, what I would prefer to have on the meeting is pretty much updates. There's nothing we need to approve, so I will defer to Sean to give us the updates for street improvements, main events, and some purchase of equipment that they've undertaken.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Bear with me one second while I find. Okay, I put together a few slides for you all to look at, ask for questions, and updated just a few of the projects that are currently going, like I say, based on Mr. Christensen and my conversation, short conversation as it was. Put a few things together as, as far as updates for this month's meeting. As far as street main, street maintenance goes, I gotta try to keep up with both slides here. So, currently underway with water main cuts and chuck holes that we're filling. We patched the north side of town in one day, took us two days on the east side of town and a day on the west. And then, if you've noticed, when you come into work in the mornings, the first street arrows, we've been painting them, or we did paint them overnight, so the traffic was less and we could keep traffic off of that fresh paint for longer, for a few hours. Temperatures and the weather was conducive to that, so we were able to take, take care of that overnight. As far as projects goes, the current ones underway are the three lift station projects, although you'll notice the Fairgrounds and Gorton are the only two of those three that are, that are currently have any activity. The Fairground one is the most activity on it right now. We've installed the wet well, sorry, the contractors installed the wet well, valve vault, and the electrical instrumentation panels have been, have been installed. The, to jump down a little bit on the, on the slide there, the Ninth Street and Park Avenue project, which obviously is, is going on at the same time and so the contractors are occupying the same space currently to, to make that project, make those two projects come together. On the Park Street project, we've got temporary water and removal of the existing roadway. Of course, that's been completed and then are currently working on the sanitary, the water main and storm sewer. And so, a lot of activity in that small block of, of Park Avenue. Force Main, I know they're working on that, it's not on the notes here, but they were putting, putting that in and they were tying that into Seventh Street and they were, they were accessing the manhole on Seventh Street last week. I remember driving by and watch, and watching that happen, so. Back up the page a little ways for the other lift station. They've currently mobilized for Gorton Avenue, so if you drive on Gorton Avenue there by West Central Steel, they've got some pretty large equipment there, some, some, some wet well material as well as trench box that's set on site, so they're getting ready to go on that project. Miller Park, the removals have been completed. Lights, fence, surfacing has all been removed. Storm drain's been installed. The base course and paving has been installed and the surface is yet to be painted. I checked yet again this afternoon and it hasn't, they got a, it's a, we call it painting, but it's a, it's the plain surface, the green surface that you'll see, the final surface on that hasn't, hasn't been done yet.
Can, can we interject at any point?
Fence and lights are, yes.
Sorry.
Yes, interrupting your time. I should've said that first.
Okay. Just wondering if on the Miller Park tennis courts? If we could revisit the painting of the lines and making those pickleball courts? And I know at the time and the discussion that we had was that because there was the tennis grant that was part of that, it doesn't cover the total cost of that, that surface? So, I'm not understanding why we can't.
Sure.
Stripe for pickleball.
Right. I would agree with you. The, the last word I got when, when being handed these, these projects to, to whatever extent that they were completed at the time was that we could not because of the grant. I'll review those notes and look back and see if there's any, any, any wiggle room on that particular subject. Because you're exactly right, the grant doesn't cover 100% of the project and so, can we say that, you know, the part you're not covering, we're gonna do pickleball? I, I think the answer is no, but I will, I'll, I'll check in on it again. I've got some of the contacts from Mr. Brizendine and I'll, I'll look into that some more.
If I may, I know that question was asked and the answer was no.
Right.
Because it's the U.S. Tennis Association that the grant was written through. However, we did have conversations at the advisory board about doing that on other tennis courts and I do not think it would be very expensive to do Sperryville or a couple of the other ones. That has been a request, an ongoing request, and that was discussed last year when we applied for that grant. And I don't know that anyone was aware that, that, that was a criteria of that grant, but that's my understanding. But I would encourage us to look at other options because we have people leaving the community to play pickleball in other communities and I think we could accomplish it with paint very easily and shouldn't be expensive.
We've, yeah, we've discussed two or three different parks, tennis court areas that we would do exactly that. So, we've, we've been doing that at places other than Miller, but, and I agree, I think the, the last I'd heard is that because it's a tennis grant, they won't even consider anything but tennis, but I'll look into that as well. And then, like I say, we'll all update you on which parks we're, we're thinking about for the, for the pickleball lines as well, so. Anything else on projects so far and then I'll continue?
Isn't Northside Park, isn't that pickleball?
Correct. Yep.
What other ones are?
Why are you gonna ask me questions I don't have in front of me? No, I don't know.
We got Lincoln.
Yep, I can find out.
We got the wastewater in Pleasant View.
Yep, I can find out and.
It's gone?
Yeah.
All together?
I, I know, I, I know Northside is the one that they've been talking about, or they have talked about in the past, but I can find out what other parks.
Okay. And then, one other thing on Miller.
Yep.
It's kind of a major neighborhood park.
Yep.
There's no play equipment now and we said there would be some.
There will be.
Okay. This fall or next spring?
The plan is this fall.
Okay.
Yes. We'll go north of where it was. We're still talking about the, the exact location of that and which, in this, you know, unfortunately, which trees would have to go out to, to put the playground equipment in. At one point, we talked about lowering that area to account for potential overflow for some storm drainage and so there's still some conversations happening there to try, to try to make what best use of that property.
Okay. Thanks. And then, the only other thing I'll add to that is that, you know, Mr. Brizendine met with the daycare providers in that area and they had wanted some concrete areas where their kids could ride their bikes. And I don't know if that was passed on to you or not, but you may wanna.
Yep.
Follow up on those notes.
Yep, I don't remember that note exactly, but I'll, I'll look into that.
In relationship to the playground equipment we bought last year? Is there a date that that's going to be installed by?
This fall. There, there's another slide in here, actually.
Okay.
That says we're, we're in the process of getting those contracts back and forth and getting that stuff purchased, so at a, at a later update.
The stuff that was purchased last year is still not installed?
Correct, correct. I can update you on all playground stuff at an upcoming meeting. I, I don't have that exact dates in, in this one. The plan was, as you recall, is to wait for the new stuff to be purchased so that we can get all of it installed at this, you know, similar timeframe. So, the plan is to do all that this fall. Any other questions so far? Okay. Fence and lights are installed. The lights have not been tested yet. The wires, in fact, are still hanging, so they're still waiting for the, for the underground work to be done to get those, get those lights installed and, or lights operational. Wastewater Treatment Plant, the old lot, I should've said there, so apologize for that, was, we finished overlaying that on the 12th, so it's a brand new batuminous surface on that and if not, it won't be tonight, in fact, because we've got the, the final, the final pay request is just on my desk today, so we'll get, you guys will see that here coming up soon, but that looks really good. Other projects going on, again, there with the playground equipment, we're waiting to receive some contracts back from the vendor on the new purchase stuff and then we'll, we'll have an update slide in the near future on, on when those are going in and get, when I get a better idea for scheduling. Brush Site Gate, where contracts are at the vendor's office right now or the vendor's shop, if you will, and so we're waiting for that one to come back so we can get going on that project. And then, they bought North 71 Path Project, we're waiting on a start date from Dunic. We've had a pre-construction meeting. Contracts are in place, everything's ready to go. They, they need only a few days actually for that section of project, maybe a week, and so we're waiting for the exact start date on that one. But it's, I know we've marked out the removals today and so we're getting close to, to seeing some new pavement on that section of path. Mosquito spraying, been the topic of a lot of discussion recently. We've been sprayed the tuck, we have sprayed the entire town again this past week and we'll be spraying Robins Island for each Rockin' Robins event. So, you'll see the truck again tomorrow night and now, of course, for the Rockin' Robins events, it's just at the island, so keep that in mind. We're not doing the entire town again. And the, the other note there is that we've applied Larvicide earlier this year to over 100 ponds and, and wet areas within the city limits and so, try to get that taken care of before they get to be adults. Yes, sir.
How about the dog park?
Are we doing the dog park?
Well, as, as part of the entire town, yes. I don't, we've not sprayed that specifically because there wasn't a, an event like Rockin' Robins there, but we can.
I know that last year, we had kind of just did whatever and then I know that one time Gary went in and I don't know if he went in the fence or whatever and sprayed it a little bit better. Maybe just something, because I mean, I watch that site pretty closely. There is a lot of concerned dog.
Mosquitoes are awful hungry this year, so.
They are and they're big. Oh, actually, they're little. They're vicious.
You know they're there.
I was just gonna comment, there's an event there every night for the dogs, kind of thing. I know it's not the numbers, but it is unbearable. You could not stay.
All right. We'll look into spraying, you know, making maybe even two passes there as, as we're out, or maybe we can make a quick pass there if we have some stuff left over after the, we spray the Rockin' Robins.
You guys are doing a great job. It's, it's a tough spot. It really is tough.
The next slide will tell you a little bit why it's a tough slot here, a tough spot. So, we've sprayed three times this summer already for mosquitoes, the entire town. It takes, each time takes two nights and two sprayers and uses 55 gallons of the Anvil 2+2 adulticide. Each barrel that we use costs $4,200. And it only kills the mosquitoes that it contacts. Okay, so about $12,500 has been spent so far this summer just on the adulticide. Okay, so that's not labor, that's just the material. The Larvicide is used on the ponds and wet areas, of course, to get them in the larval stage before or in the breeding habitat and we've spent $5,000 on the Larvicide this summer. Now, it's in the budget every year and we, we plan for this every year, but it's always a little bit of a shocking number to some people to know exactly how much that costs to, to do, to do exactly, to try to make everything more comfortable to be outside when, when the temperatures are in their 70s instead of the 90s.
All I'll just say to that is with the number of emails and phone calls and messages I get on it, I think it's money well spent and as a matter of fact, I had a couple of people contact me and wanted to know if we would hire out to Spicer. So, I think those were citizens and not council members, though.
Okay.
So.
No, and it's, it's absolutely something that obviously we're willing to do and, and when the numbers are justified, we'll, we'll continue to do that, so. As far as some miscellaneous information, I'll wrap up here. Obviously, as mentioned before, we're preparing for the first Rockin' Robins event of the summer, on the 17th. We've already, if you've noticed, roped off some of the wet areas previously. We could go to prevent some, prevent some damage prior to the event. Weather looks to be decent tomorrow and so hopefully that will come out, come out real well with that. I saw the lines were painted today on the way up here, so I think we're, we're in good shape to get going on that. We've continued to prepare ball fields for end of season games and so obviously that's wrapping up for all the different events. And then, I know one question has been asked, how much rain have we had? Because we always blame everything on the rain and we've had nine and a half inches since the 1st of June and so. And I looked at a daily log and there's not very many days where it's zero, so we've, it's been a, been an issue this, this summer. Bryce Park Splash Pad continues to have heavy use. Every time I drive by, there's all, there's a lot of kids running through the water and the machines continue to rotate and spray and do everything that they do to, and picnic tables are full, so that's, that's all the good news. I unfortunately have to end with one bad slide because we've had some vandalism out there. This is, twice a week, we clean. a week, we clean bottles out of a toilet. And unfortunately, the people use the toilet after the bottles go in the toilet. So my comment there on the side is that if it continues, I can't continue to have guys unplug toilets twice a week without shutting that facility. So that's why I wanted to bring it up to, on a public forum, that, that we need to kind of police ourselves a little bit. And that's, it's an unfortunate circumstance to an outstanding facility, that we've got a few people that, that can't, can't have something nice. So it's, it's unfortunate.
When you say bottles, plastic bottles?
Plastic bottles. And that's what this picture is supposed to indicate. This was just today. Gary called me right before I came up here and sent me the picture to, to include. So, yeah, plastic bottles, and they've, like I say, twice a week in the last three or four weeks, they've done that.
Do they plug it up so they overflow then, or?
Yep, plug it up and then, and then use the facility and then flush it, and so it runs everywhere. And then, and then we get to call and have send a couple of guys over to, to jet it or clean it or, you know, do the maintenance on a, on a brand-new facility for something that's, you know, unnecessary.
And how many times does this happen?
Yeah. Well, eight or 10 times, probably. Like I say, twice a week.
It might be the same person.
Might be. Obviously, we don't know that.
Right, right.
We could set up some cameras, but.
Not in the bathroom.
I'd rather not do that either. I'd rather, you know, people respect, respect the facility and, and, and use it for what it's meant to be used for.
Probably illegal to do that in the bathroom.
And not, I don't mean in the bathroom. Good point. I should clarify that. Not in the bathroom. I won't be setting up cameras in the bathroom, but.
Is, is there signage? Like, you don't deposit plastic bottles, or?
I mean, I know it's common sense. I understand.
Recycle bins everywhere out there. There must be six or eight of them out there in trash cans, and there's plenty of opportunity that they actually, and have to walk by the trash cans and recycle bins to get to the bathroom. So I, I don't have a sign that says, please don't throw your bottles in the toilet. I, I don't have that.
Well, well.
I'd rather not have to.
I, I know, I know. It's common sense, however. However, obviously, somebody's missing the boat.
Right. That's all I have for an update from Public Works. Any other, yeah, yes, ma'am.
Just a question. You mentioned cameras, but we have cameras out at the Destination Playground. I think for the quality, for the people to use it, I'd hate to see the restrooms closed because of that. So.
I agree.
I'd ask us to check it out to see, so that people are safe and, and can use the facilities.
Yep. Well, and, and we've got some issues, potential issues with, with another area of the park that I think would benefit from, from cameras. And so we can, we can look into that.
Your new lawnmower? What are the reports from the guys using it, or?
The Batwing one?
Yeah.
They love it, and it covers a lot of ground. You see it in the, in the roadside ditches there along Business 71. And, and it, yeah, I've not heard any, any negative about it. They.
Good.
I don't know if they're fighting over who gets to drive it, but they, yeah, they really like it.
Okay, great. That's good to hear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
That's right. People aren't watching, are we going to post signs actually at the bathrooms that indicate that if, if we continue to have vandalism, we're going to shut those down?
I, I can't.
I think that's appropriate, because maybe we can have a little pure, pure watching now. You know, if somebody knows it's going to get shut down, and I watch you flush a bottle, maybe that is a way to police that.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I can look into, I mean, you guys know me, I hate more signs, but.
Well, but these, I wouldn't make this a permanent sign. Just put it on the door that, you know, if this happens, we're going to shut it down.
Yeah.
We are here, but maybe people that are using it aren't watching this program. Question unrelated, but I just want to bring up Seventh and the Railroad Crossing.
Yes.
What's the status on that?
Yeah, good point. I, I, I know I told you July, and it's almost near the end of July. I've not heard an, an update on that. I can find out and report very soon. I know that, I know the main contract with BNSF is with the county, and so I can make a quick phone call in the morning even and find out the, the status on that.
Because it's getting pretty treacherous.
Yep.
We see some damage.
Absolutely.
My wife and I were through Wadena yesterday, and they have the new crossing, and it's wonderful. I don't know if you've been through Wadena recently or not, but I used to drive that regularly for work, and that was really bad, almost as bad as our Seventh Street is. And now it's just as smooth as butter. So, so help is coming.
Yes.
Good news. Thanks for an excellent report.
Yep. Yes.
Not to belabor things, but on the railroad crossing at Seventh, I understand the southmost one is not going to be redone?
Correct. There're not going to be new planks in there. We're going to do what we can to make that a better ride.
Okay.
Partly because that track is not going to be used too long into the future. If not, you know, with the, with the coal pile going away, then it probably won't be used very much into the future. And so we're going, we're looking into some options for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Financial report?
Okay. Steve and I have met a couple of times, and he's put together the financial report as of June 30th. And so he's busy talking over there, but we'll let him come up and address the report that he has to present.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I noticed my predecessor closed out the file, so I'm not sure.
Let me get to the report.
That's service.
Sorry about that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, included in your packet is the June financial report. As Councilman Nelson mentioned, we have met a couple of different times. The committee council agenda report form talks a little bit about not only June, but in May. Last month's report indicated that we had a $5.9 million negative cash flow. That speaks to a little bit of the discussion we've had in the past about reserves and fund balances. June is a month where we receive property taxes, LGA, and a quarterly transfer from the Minnesota Utilities, so that negative cash flow actually improved to 3.5 million. And that's in the general operating fund alone. We also had a request to speak a little bit about the Public Improvement Revolving Fund, also known as the PIR Fund. This fund was established over 40 years ago. We're still researching exactly when it was established, but it was, it was quite a while ago. It's a fund that is used by and set by the council to cash flow projects until we're able to sell bonds or determine financing where the council wants to determine financing for a project of some sort, primarily capital projects. There is a million dollars there that we've used. We've used this fund for various projects like the auditorium project, street projects, those types of capital fund projects. One criteria that the council has, has set in the past and can change is that this loan, or this temporary loan, has to be repaid within five years. And this is totally controlled by the council as far as reviewing this. And it will be in the list of funds that we look at for the 19 budget process. There are a number of budget amendments that we have had, also had some preliminary discussion on, primarily to deal with the collective bargaining agreements that the council just approved. And so those departmental budgets, we will be bringing back in August next month, some budgetary amendments amending the, the various departments. It's a common practice that if there are labor contracts that are unsettled, that we budget for a projected increase somewhere else in the budget, so it doesn't affect negotiations and those types of things, and then bring back budgetary amendments at a later date for the council to take action on. With that, on the capital improvements, Mr. Christensen talked about a number of the street projects and those types of indicators. And there's always a time delay, a lot of times, between when the contractors are doing work and when their pay estimates come in and, 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 and need to get paid. So we have the bond proceeds in for the stormwater work and the refrigeration system and the street for 2018. We actually are meeting tomorrow with bond council to plan out and discuss any future financing for other various projects that you see there as far as what was planned in the 18 budget for City Hall primarily. But we'll also have some preliminary discussion on the curling facility and any other projects that, that we are, or have been talking about. A number of the projects at the waste treatment plant, we have been in conversations, and these are the lift stations that Mr. Christensen alluded to primarily. But the status of these, there's a couple in here that we'll be bringing back again to the council to amend the budget of either being delayed or not being followed through on. And I'm, I'm not sure exactly what those are at this point, but we'll be having those to a future meeting as well. The vehicles that you see there, we have a few that we, we've done, the squad cars and the Polaris and some pickups. Also, on the next page, we have had final payment on the fire pumper and delivery, a number of other projects you see there. And again, there is some delay in council action between that and, and us, our finance department receiving the resolutions. You'll see a couple items listed here that actually have, the council has taken action to amend, one being the fuel tanks. You've re-appropriated $95,000 of that to the lighting at Baker Diamond, as well as the $200,000 on the resurface of the pool. And so those will show up in next month's report as well. The general operating, again, these percentages through the first six months should be at about 50%. They will be a little bit more favorable in this once those budgetary amendments are done for the collective bargaining agreements. They'll actually add dollars into the various departments, increasing them based on what was successfully negotiated. The one that I would, these are the revenues. And again, I mentioned in June, we received the property taxes and the local government aid. The one item that I would like to point out there is under the other financing sources and miscellaneous revenue, we will be bringing a budgetary amendment to you for the reclassification of the Caris Health lease. It was an intergovernmental transfer, which showed up under other financing sources in the past. The lease revenues now will show up under miscellaneous revenue. It's just, it's just a reclassification with no dollar change. But we just, moving forward into the 19 budget process, one of those cleanup items. I'm sorry. Go back here.
Mayor Calvin has a question. Steve?
Was Rice Hospital other financing sources, or was it intergovernmental?
It was under the other financing sources. The intergovernmental transfers with the Minnesota Utilities and Rice Hospital was under the other financing sources.
Right, so Rice Hospital was under intergovernmental. It's going to get transferred overs. I think you maybe said that wrong. I think that's.
Oh, I'm sorry. It, it is being reclassified to miscellaneous revenue for the lease rather than the intergovernmental, because they are no longer a component unit of the city. I'm sorry if I misstated that. Thank you for pointing that out. Under the operating, the general government, all of those are pretty much in line. Again, we have a couple budgetary amendments that will be coming again, so they'll be a little bit more favorable. One item that we've had some preliminary discussion on is the legal. In this report, it shows that it's still below the 50%, but this is through May. It's, so June will be coming. And with the level of projects that we've been doing in 2018 with the curling facility and a number of other projects, we're watching this one closely and, and are having discussions about where do we cover a lot of those costs where there are projects that weren't planned for? Do we bill them, or? But we'll have those discussions with the council, too, as we move forward. But that department at this point is one that we're watching very closely. Public safety and Public Works, really no comments there. Again, there'll be budgetary amendments, and, and they'll be a little bit more favorable than what they show up here. Under the recreational or other types of promiscer, you'll see that the non-departmental cultural recreation in the middle air is really kind of mistitled. It really should be the civic promotions or civic groups, Wilmer Fest, Meals on Wheels, and those programs. And there is slightly, a little more than what we had budgeted, but I believe that was something to do with the parade or something like that. We'll research that and, and find out why that is slightly over, but it's right in line. Waste treatment, again, we work with the utilities on timing on that and continue to, I think we receive that kind of a month behind when the revenues are actually collected. John likes to use the waste treatment money and then give it to us at a later date. But that's just a timing issue between the billing and when we receive it and get it to us. So those numbers seem a lot lower than what they actually are. And this is, the last page is the investments and where the dollars are. We have a lot of money in, in one of the local institutions. That's the one that we have our, our liquid accounts in, and we're dealing with a couple other local institutions on doing some money markets with, trying to receive a little bit better rates and those types of things. So one of those institutions actually purchased the bonds that we sold. With that, I'd answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, members of council?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Holken?
One thing, if I could interrupt Councilman Nelson, is that we've also had discussions on planning a work session for the council sometime in the next month or two, especially when we're starting the budget process for 19. And especially for those council members that may be a little newer than others in processes and different funds and explanations and those types of things. So.
Any other questions? Just say thank you, Steve, for your report.
Bill, I had told Audrey earlier today that when you came in, I would put you on right away, but she had told me you were going to be here between quarter after and 6:30. So are you okay to wait? Okay, thank you. Next, we have our community development. Councilmember Fagerley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce Peterson and I talked last week. There's a possibility of the city selling some acreage for, that's adjacent to the Y project. So, Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, the city has been working on this Y project for quite a long time. And as part of that Y project, there's actually two separate projects within a project. The first is the highway portion, the second is the rail. Last year, MINDOT solicited contractors for the design-build portion. They shortlisted it to three contractors. And since that time, staff has met with two of those contractors that have expressed interest in purchasing some city property that is near the Y project in, actually, in actually, the Y project takes portions out of each of the parcels. There's a 60 and an 80. The 60 acres is south of Minnesota Highway 40, and the 80-acre tract is west of County Road 55. We've tried to work with the contractors to identify options for their need for borrow for the project and have explored different options with the city attorney, gotten his input as to how the city could proceed with selling product or selling the property. And it seems like the most feasible alternative is to actually sell the property outright. And they can then take the borrow off the site that they need. And we would have to net out the actual acreage that is being used for the project from the total acreage of the parcel in calculating a sales price. We've had appraisals conducted on the property. We originally tried to have the property appraised for its value for taking borrow out, but the appraisers that we spoke with said that that was difficult to do. And we were led in the direction of an appraisal that appraised each of the properties for its ag value. its ag value as likely into the future, that is, the highest and best use of those parcels outside of the Y project and outside of the removal of the borrow. At this time, we need to work with the contractors and with MINDOT so that we've got something to put into this project that leaves all the contractors on a level playing field. The city attorney has been very adamant that we not structure any type of a deal with a contractor that would provide an unfair advantage to any one contractor, and that only makes sense. So what's being proposed is that the city sell the two parcels, that the council direct the staff to proceed that way, and the option that would make the most sense would be to determine a sales price using the appraisals as a basis and netting out the right-of-way that will be taken for the property, as well as some wetland acreage. And if that is done, the city would expect in the neighborhood of 700 to 750,000 total for the two parcels. To make this a fair process, what's being proposed is that we work with MINDOT so that they include an addendum to their bid specs that says that the successful bidder on the contract will have the ability to purchase these two parcels at the fixed price. That way, each of the bidders can put that fixed price into their bid, no one's getting an advantage. If someone wants to discount the value of the property in their bid, that's up to them, but what we're doing is we're making it available to everyone at the same price, and the next steps would be for staff to work to come up with a final purchase price, communicate that with MINDOT, and get that put into the specs. So the motion or the action that we would recommend from the council at some point, whether it would be tonight or in the near future, because this project has gone to bid, would be to direct staff to proceed with the sale of the property at a price to be determined, and that the property be offered to the lowest responsible bidder for the Y project as determined by the bid process, which is being handled by MINDOT. There is a possibility of a closed session tonight to discuss pricing and other real estate properties, and if that would be an appropriate time to do this, I could bring a suggestion to the council for pricing this property as well, and we can do it in a closed session. So that's, that's where we're at with that project, and that's the recommendation of staff at this point.
So is there a reason why we sell both parcels?
They need the borrow off of both.
They do.
There's a tremendous amount of soil that goes into this project. If you think about the two overpasses, the railroad right-of-way being raised for a double width track.
What happens if the low bidder does not want to buy it?
Then we still own it.
Okay.
We have a contractor now that would buy it outright.
Yeah.
But in speaking with the city attorney, we don't believe that's the best course of action, because if they're not the low bidder, then they've got the control of the property and it disrupts the project.
Yeah. I was thinking if you just set a price, a minimum, and then open it up and let them bid among themselves.
You can certainly do that. If they want to, they're going to always want to minimize their pricing in their bid, obviously, to be the lowest responsible bidder, so whatever the price is the city sets for, and I'm pretty sure is the price they would use in their bid. So I don't really know how to bid it up, I don't know if that's a legitimate way to go about doing it with the potential bidders, because they're not going to, there's only one bidder that's asked to purchase it ahead of time, the other two bidders, I'm pretty sure, don't want the property if they don't get the project.
And that 60 acres, I mean, that has potential, I think, in the future, once the road and the bridge and everything is there.
Access is going to be extremely terrible because of where the elevated roadway begins and ends, plus the train tracks will bisect that 60 acres north and south. So you're going to end up with a section off of County Road 55 and then a section south of Highway 40. The property south, or the property that would be east of 55 will have reasonable access if, and the county, I'm sure, would grant some access to that property, but the property that's going to be south of 40 is going to be extremely difficult to do anything with, just from an elevation standpoint and an access standpoint.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Fagerly. I guess I'm with you and the city attorney on the thought and the idea that this needs to be a fair setup, and it needs to be something that shows no signs of favoritism towards any one particular industry and, you know, in terms of capitalism, that's kind of what we want, is competition, and that's what's going to deliver us the best results. However, the one thing that concerns me just a little bit is that whoever the winning bidder is, I mean, they stand to make a lot of money on this project, there's big dollars to be made in doing this project, and I'm kind of concerned with the fact if we're having difficulty appraising the property, you know, if we can only use an appraisal process that can appraise it as ag land, that that price may be artificially low because of its actual realized value, therefore, if, you know, say it's artificially low, whomever the winning contractor is or the winning bidder, they may be making some of their profit, so to speak, off of the city. And so I guess my thought would be, you know, I'd like to find a way, if at all possible, that the land appraised as high as it possibly can, because it seems like whomever the winning bidder is going to be, they're going to need this land, and they're going to need the fill, so I don't know what.
Well, if the council wishes to retain ownership of the property, I believe that they could just make it available to the winning bidder at a particular price per yard as borrow. And then we would retain ownership, and we've got it when they're done, we're left with excavated properties.
And in your opinion, would an idea like that kind of keep everything on an even keel between, between the earth movers? I mean, does that show selective favoritism to any of the bidders?
I don't think it does. Are you, are you suggesting then that the bidders set their own price for borrow, and we just say, we'll make the 60 and the 80 available, and we'll make no representations as to the actual volume of product that can be excavated from either of the parcels?
Yeah, I get, that's where I'm stuck as well, and I guess that's a...
And that's an unknown right now, because they've asked to go in and do soil borings, but there's crops in there, and we have Cropoli, he says, we're not going to allow them to go in there and destroy the crops just to do their soil boring, so there's a little bit of faith involved in this process.
Well, and that's, that's just kind of where I'm stuck, is that if we say, okay, price to be determined, and we determine it based on X, and we find out that, you know, there may be a way that we could have structured it that would have, that would have not shown any type of favoritism to the industries that are going to be, you know, the industry that's going to be bidding amongst each other, but this also benefits the city because, I mean, the city owns, the taxpayers own this land, so if we can maximize the return there, find some way to get creative with it, but I'm stuck a little bit when it comes to, you know, how to arrive at that final price.
Because of local water table depths, I think there are legitimate limits to the amount of borrow that can be taken out of each of these, and I'm not unconvinced that the ag value placed on the property is not fairly reflective of the borrow value. The big question is, does the city want to own it when it's done, or does the city want to put it on the tax rolls when it's done, for whatever, whatever purpose? I mean, it's not going to command, it's not going to show a high value when it's done. I mean, if we sell it, in the purchase agreement, we can have reclamation requirements, we can tell them what we expect it to look like when it's done, I think those are legitimate conditions of sale, and at that point, then, the parties decide if that's the route they want to go. There is not a lot of good access to nearby borrow for this project, and obviously, the value is being able to minimize the trucking costs.
Well, and that's why I feel like this may be some premium land, and so if it's going to have to be purchased one way or another, then let's get top dollar for our city.
And I'm not sure how we could estimate that upfront, because until we knew the volume of material to come out of there, we could make some estimates based on geographic area and guess they could go down a certain amount of feet, and the cities, typically in our project, we pay X number of dollars per yard of borrow, we could run those calculations. Those are all unknowns at this point, and to me, the biggest issue is what do we want as a final product out there? The only value of this property is either agricultural or the borrow material. I don't see really any development potential for these two parcels at all. They were purchased as extensions of the clear zones for the turf runway and the primary runway, and outside of that, the city wouldn't even own them, you know, so.
Right. Well, it seems like a good source of revenue for the city, it's just, like I said, we want to maximize our ROI whenever, whenever we have the opportunity, so that's...
We definitely did not pay that much for the property.
I imagine not.
I can assure you of that.
I imagine not.
This would be a multiple, multiple, multiple times return on the city's investment in those properties.
Thank you, Bruce.
Other questions? Kathy?
Thank you. As someone who would, as a businessperson who would complete a bid, if I know what my cost is, I'm going to bid it more conservatively than if I don't know what my cost is. And so I would, and I would rather see us have a flat dollar amount for that land, and if we mark the price up over the appraised value, they're simply going to mark their bid up by that same dollar amount. So I personally think that a fair appraised value is a fair appraised value. I'll leave that to staff.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's any question, that once we decide that we're going to set the price, at that point, it's no longer an arms-length transaction, and if, if all of the bidders say, okay, that's the price, I want access to the borrow, my bid's going to have to reflect that cost. You're absolutely correct. So at that point, it's, it's up to the city to determine where they want to set the price.
Yeah, a big project like this, an appraisal means nothing to these contractors, so.
Exactly. In conversations with the city attorney, I was told that the appraisal should be the basis for the sale.
Yeah.
Obviously, you can adjust it up, you can adjust it down, depending on circumstances, and obviously, if you keep it fair, make it available to each of the contractors in the same way, and try to protect the interests of the taxpayers, I'm not sure what else the council can do in this transaction.
Well, is it possible to sell the borrow and then farm it afterwards? City retain ownership of it?
I think you're going to be right down on the water table. I think what you'll have is large excavated wetlands when you're done.
Rice. Anyway, this is taxpayers' property, you know, it is ours, it's the taxpayers', and so we need to be diligent in getting the most that we can for it, and I think the value that they've placed on it being ag is, is too low. It's more valuable to them, and I don't know if you can determine, I know you can determine, I guess, how much borrow they can take out of there, as long as you know the water table, and they've maybe already calculated that.
There have been some discussions along those lines, I don't know that anybody's put a lot of time into trying to look at various soils types, soil mapping, going to soil tables, look at average water table depths for those soil types and model it that way. It could be done, it would be a tedious process to do that, but again, without the Y project, this property, in my opinion, is not worth what the appraisal said it was. I mean, it's not good ag property, they're both, the one is pretty wet, the other one's encumbered by a county ditch and a large buffer zone that has to be protected, so, and this, it was all appraised at a flat dollar value per acre, and the appraisals aren't really clear as to whether or not they took the wetlands and the buffer areas into consideration, they just put a blanket value on per acre, so, and the value they put on seems pretty consistent with decent farmland around here.
When is the, the timing on this effective? I mean, when do we have to, is it tonight or the next council meeting, or?
Their bids have to be submitted in September, early September.
Okay, so we do have a few weeks here that we didn't have to make the decision tonight?
Yeah. Ultimately, that will require staff to follow up with MINDOT and let them know what's, needs to be done for an addendum to the bidding process, so they can let the three shortlisted contractors know what the city's expectations or plans are for the property.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I'm just looking at the recommendation, the recommendation is just to decide to sell it with a price to be determined, and that we make the availability of parcels to be part of the bid process, and that the two parcels be offered to the successful bidder. I think that we're getting ahead of the game if we're, we're going to be talking about price, but the concept of selling them and including them is all we're being asked to do here with this piece in front of us, correct?
Yes, it's quite possible that if you didn't put a price into the bid specs, or if you didn't say the city has set this price for it, you might have somebody that says, well, here, I'm going to plan that I'm going to pay more for the property, and I'm going to build that into my bid, but I'm going to do something else somewhere else to reduce the price. I'm not sure that the contractors are going to use that information very responsibly unless you have a fixed dollar amount to go in the bid.
I'm not suggesting that we do that tonight, I'm just saying that all I'm being asked to do apparently here is just to move forward with determining a price down the road as we enter into this, so I'm not suggesting anything with the price at this point, I'm looking at what I'm being asked to do, and that is simply to move forward with the sale and determine a price at a later date.
Well, part of that recommendation, if the council would actually make that as formal action, I would ask that staff be allowed to work internally to determine that price, just to keep the process short-timed and to move it forward quicker. Again, that's something that can be discussed in closed session, and, you know, we can, we can put a price on it, I've got the appraisals with, I can share that financial information with you this evening if you want to do that, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Nope. That's what I was just going to say.
So what does the council want to do? Move it to a closed session later, or bring it back?
It's ready to go, let's move forward.
Close session.
I mean, it's a question of price.
So do you want to move it to the council meeting and take action and...
Move it to the regular agenda and then close it then.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have Municipal Utilities, application for water treatment plant funding. Mr. Heron?
Thank you, Mayor.
I believe we're right on schedule on my, on my time clock, so.
Perfect.
That's perfect, so.
My news I have isn't quite as good as earlier with CenterPoint. We're in front of the council tonight to ask for support for a grant, and the grant is for our water treatment project that we have started. There has been a lot of resources put into this project, both on the city side as well as the utility side, to understand what our options are as we go forward here with meeting the chlorides or the salty discharge requirements on the city side on the wastewater. So what we're doing today with our water treatment plant affects the end results on the wastewater discharge side, so that's why the city and utility have been collaboratively working together on this project. The council, we're before the council tonight to talk about the project, or to talk about the grant that we're submitting to help fund it. It is a Public Facilities Authority grant, and if this project moves forward, it will require bonding, and the bonding is completed through the city, therefore, the Public Facilities Authority is requiring that the city concur with the commission's resolution to submit this grant application, and they're asking for the city to sign off on the grant application as well. Project costs, as we know it today, class four estimate, engineer's estimate, is sitting at $85 million without engineering, and the grant application itself could range anywhere from zero to 80% of the project with $7 million being the cap for that grant, so, that's where we're at with it. So with that, I will open it up. So with that, I will open it up for further questions.
John, you know, I think one thing is, is that, I mean, we know we need to do something with our water system. You know, you've been in front of us numerous times through numerous reports. You know, this should not be a surprise to any of us. And the big number, we all expected that as well. We're not happy to see it, but we expected it. For any of us that have been paying attention to what you've said, I believe for the last four years that I've been sitting here, and probably even before that, you know, you said, we're going to be coming sometime, and it's not going to be a pretty picture. So, but, you know, this is quality water. This is how we, you know, maintain our system. And, you know, applying for grants is one of those ways of paying for it. So are there any comments or questions from council? Otherwise, the request is to move this forward because this is a time-sensitive grant application.
Thank you, Mayor, for those comments. Yes, the application is due here July 31st. And as the mayor alluded to, this is a very expensive project. This is actually the first phase of multiple phases, and the phases as we go forward do not get cheaper.
Councilman Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I support moving forward with this. It's obviously, you know, it's obviously something that has to be dealt with and taken care of, and if we let it go by, it creates even more problems for us. Since the issue first came up, which was what, years back, couple of years back?
A few.
Yeah, taking some time to do research, and various states are, you know, across the country are dealing with this too. And kind of the one resounding theme that I'm getting is a lot of cities are saying, okay, we're, we got to do what we got to do for right now, but then to address it in the future, what are we going to do on the front end of treatment? And that's kind of the direction that they're going now. It's very expensive. But the more, I guess, the tone that I'm getting is, the more cities are doing it, the more it's kind of bringing the cost down because the technology is being forced to come up. And so, you know, you got supply and demand. And so I would just encourage us to, you know, go ahead and do what we got to do to make sure that we can comply, but then also to explore looking out into the future, which our municipal utilities and our public works is good at. What are we going to do in terms of our water supply and treatment on the front end? Because that can really help us on the back end kind of, you know, navigate away from some of these problems. And I know it's going to be expensive, but if we can keep that locked in our brains moving into the future, it'll help lessen the blow when we get those numbers back too. And thoughts about that? Am I off base? Tell me if I'm wrong.
No, no, councilmember Palmer, you're on target. And I can refer to some of those questions to Joel Bergman, our water supervisor. He works more with the operational side of treatment. But we are looking, it's, we've referred to it as a stepwise approach when we've been in front of the commission as well as the council. And what we are doing today does not address the softening, but when we're done with this project, our goal is to supply the community with about 60% of its water from that treatment plant, which is on the north, referred to the Northeast Treatment Plant. Right now, about 40% of the water is coming from there. That water coming from the Northeast Treatment Plant is considerably softer than coming out of the Southwest Treatment Plant. Therefore, once this project is done, part of the discussions, collaboration that we've had between the city staff, our staff at the utilities, along with the council and commission, is once this project's done, that'll then roll over to an education process, both of your water softening companies and suppliers as well as homeowners to start dialing back to softeners, generating their softeners less. So in turn, on the back end, that should reduce the chloride in the wastewater discharge. So there's many, many moving pieces to obtain the end results of the wastewater treatment plant. And this is just one of all the research and study work that has been done, both on the city side and the utility side, that the approach we're taking moves towards the end results in a very financially disciplined process, so.
When we build this project, or do this project, how do you, how do you measure it for number of families? Is it current number of families? Are we planning for the future here? Are we just doing it for the right now? What is this going to? I know we have to do it, I'm not saying that, but how are we, how are we thinking on this project? Are we looking down the road or are we looking for the right now?
Oh, councilmember, very good question as well. We are looking out into the future. We are looking at growth, growth statistics, what that could mean on a water treatment plant, while also looking at how the volumes or the demand that our customers place on the system. Water has been like the electric side. It's been flat. Community's growing, but water consumption per capita has been flat. However, when we look at the capacity of our plants, and as we prepare for the future, we do see a need to increase capacity output. So we will be doing that with this project, as well as when the Southwest project comes up as well. So right now, Joe wants to talk a little bit about the capacity of the two plants in more detail. You know, we can provide that information for you if you're looking for it, but yeah.
Okay.
But this project is more centered toward quality of water.
Correct.
Than it is numbers?
Yes. That is a correct statement.
That's why the cost.
Councilmember Christensen, yeah. It's actually twofold. One is quality of water because our quality of water is degrading because of the age of our plant. So we need to address quality of water. Along with addressing the quality of water, and when we're talking quality of water, we're talking in different terms than the chloride issue. But as long as we got the chloride issue facing us, we are also looking at what we can do in this project to capitalize on this project to address the chlorides on the wastewater side, which is by increasing the capacity at that plant, providing the community with more water that needs less softening. So it's a twofold. But the main driver right now as we speak today is the quality of water.
So is the Northeast and Southwest in different aquifers? I mean, they're.
Sure. If you don't mind, I'll yield that question to Joel Bergman to talk about the two different aquifers that we have there. But yeah, that is, would be a correct assumption.
There are actually two different aquifers. The one at Southwest is roughly in 150-foot depth, and the one here is approximately 350. Different quality of water, different ammonia amounts, different iron amounts, manganese, and the age of the water is different as well.
So is this directed at both of them or just the one?
This particular project's only directed at the Northeast Treatment Plant.
Okay.
It has the highest ammonia content. It's actually, ammonia removal is the biggest water quality issue.
It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money.
And this is just the beginning, you said?
Yeah.
You know, again, these are some things that, you know, some of us younger on the council are inheriting. And, you know, you know, I remember when I was first elected, I sat down and talked with Wes about this, and he goes, you know, we've been talking about doing this for a long time. It's just that the timing has never been right. And so, you know, today just happens to be the day that's coming in front of us. So, and, you know, we can kick the can down the road another five years and, you know, double the cost, and instead of costing 85 million, it's going to cost us 200 million. And so we have to address these issues face up and, you know, continue working with them. So thank you for your presentation. My understanding is you want this to move to the regular council agenda?
That would be correct, Mayor, if that's at all possible. We'd like to see it moved to the regular agenda with authorization for yourself and/or actually the grant application setup for yourself to sign off on. So yes, that would be appreciated.
Is there opposition to that? Seen and hearing, then we'll move forward. So you get to stick around for even more fun.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Charis Health Amendments to the Lease and Affiliation Agreement. Mr. Robert Scott, our city attorney, followed by Mr. Bill Fenske. Or do you want to go straight to Bill?
I think you can go straight to Bill.
Mr. Fenske?
All right.
Be nice to us now.
Aren't I always?
I'll let you decide.
All right. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. On behalf of Charis Health, Rice Memorial Hospital Board is supporting a recommendation for an amendment to the affiliation agreement and to the lease. The amendment relates to the requirement that Charis Health would have a standalone audit, and we believe that that would be duplicative in nature as Centra Care is going to have an audit. Common practice would really indicate that a subsidiary does not typically have a standalone audit. It is part of the parent audit. And so we have worked with Mr. Holland and Mr. Scott regarding a language that would require that we would provide through the auditors all of the necessary information, as would customarily be included in an audit, but it would not require a standalone audit of Charis Health. One of the factors that's going into our recommendation is the cost of a standalone audit would be likely in excess of $100,000 for an organization like Charis, and we believe that is just an unnecessary cost. And due to the common practice, as I mentioned, about subsidiaries not typically having standalone audits, that's what our recommendation is for your consideration tonight.
Could you tell us what the hospital board, are they supporting this agreement?
Yes, they, they had a special meeting this morning. We had a meeting a month or so ago, and then we worked out through Mr. Holland, Mr. Scott, some revised language that the hospital board approved this morning and is recommending support for your consideration tonight.
Thank you. And councilmember Nelson, as the liaison to Rice Health, I'm sorry, yeah, to the Rice Health Board, what's your recommendation on this?
I believe the wording of it accomplishes what we need. I believe our auditor is fine with it. It has been reviewed. I think the changes of the wording simply, I think, more articulate what was being planned to do all along. So there is audit inside the Centra Care audit, so I think this recommendation is good to go.
Other questions from the council?
Yeah, we've got a question. So now, Painesville is part of like Centra Care, so when they do an audit, Centra Care's auditing Painesville, and then they would audit us, and they would audit whoever? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes, and it's really part of the overall scope of a Centra Care audit that includes Centra Care in any of its affiliates.
Would it be, would we have access to the specifics of Charis audit then?
Absolutely. And that's what this language is requiring, is that we will be required to provide through the auditors all of that information as you would normally see in an audit. Without the one piece of a, and it's really a separate audit opinion.
Okay.
But it would be part of the Centra Care audit opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Shuntis.
Thank you. Bill, as long as you're here, the financials for Charis Health were included in our packet for the city council meeting tonight. Are you comfortable talking about some of the information that was contained in that?
Sure. Making sure I know which financial statements you have, but I would try to answer whatever question I could.
Okay.
Are you referencing the ones that were attached to the minutes?
Correct.
The May minutes is what we have in, May 30th minutes are what we have in our council packet. And I think the report that you went over at that May meeting is included in that.
Okay.
Okay. And I understand I'm catching off guard here, but the operating margin, it starts out in January at 4.5 and drops down to, as of 630, 2.1. The operating cash flow margin goes from 11.1 to 8.4, and excess margin, 3.9 down to 2.4. And those are all below the benchmark standards, but can you just tell us what was, what's impacting those figures?
Well, there were, there were transactions that were part of the ACMC deal that were really not known until after we started preparing our financial statements. And so some of those are factoring into the overall Charis. Remember, Charis is broader than just Rice Memorial. And then there's the, another factor was purchase accounting activity. Accounting standards dictate that we record things based on certain pronouncements and standards. And so those were not fully developed and understood until we got into it, and that was probably in March and April. And so as a result, the numbers have pushed downward. I will tell you is that Rice is doing very well. We have been extremely busy. Both our inpatient unit is pretty much steady with where we thought, but then one of the primary drivers is our surgeries are up, and that drives profitability at Rice. So overall, Rice is doing as good or better than what we had projected them to be.
Thank you.
It was the March 31st statements that were attached to that meeting.
Yep. And I think at some point, our May financial statements are much more reflective of what's going on, and I certainly can come back at any time and share with those with you about how things are going financially at Charis.
Okay. And my understanding is you'd like this move forward to the regular agenda so that you can get those minutes behind you and move on with your activities?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so we'll move that forward too. You'll be the second item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I can quickly interrupt, just with a procedural note for the council, because I could see how this could be a little confusing. On your agenda for the regular meeting, are the minutes from, I think it was the May Rice Hospital meeting, where they approved a earlier iteration of this amendment?
Hmm.
So this contract is a contract between Centra Care, Charis, Rice Hospital Board, and the city. Rice had earlier approved the first version of this amendment. That's what's reflected in those minutes. By approving those minutes, you're not agreeing to that earlier version. You would need to vote separately on the new version that we've worked out with Bill and his team.
Yeah, I believe that councilmember Nelson understood that, so I think that's how we're going to handle it under consent.
Okay.
So, yes. So we will, so just a procedural thing then, do we have to do consent before we take this action?
I don't think you have to, but I think it would be naturally appropriate to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the, where is my page? Next, we have the dissolving the Community and Rec Joint Powers Agreement. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, in your packets tonight is a copy of the termination agreement. This is a document that myself and Dr. Holmes with the school I've been working on for about the last eight weeks. What we were trying to do tonight is that this is also being put before the school board. Right now, as I speak, I was waiting for a text to see if it had been passed or not passed. I haven't gotten that from Dr. Holmes yet. But what I would recommend is that this be moved to the regular agenda and approved tonight. This has been reviewed and approved by the school attorneys. It's been approved by our city attorney also. So whether or not they pass this tonight, I would still encourage that the council give this consideration and recommendation to approve.
Okay. Again, this is a recommendation coming from our city attorney and city administrator. Our city administrator was tasked with having those meetings. You'll notice on the financial impact, it states that it's unknown at this time, but there will be some necessary changes in the organizational payments affecting this year's budget and future budgets. So what that says to me, and in talking with Mr. Holland, is that Mr. Holland and Mr. Holm will work these out and will bring any amendments back to us that have to be done. So my recommendation, we move this forward. Discussion from the council. We'll move it forward to the regular agenda. Nothing else come before us? We are adjourned until 7 o'clock.